Okay, welcome everyone to the Board of Education meeting. This is our first meeting of the month and it's our business meeting and I'd like to know if there's anyone first to convene.
And convene, yes, okay.
And then ask if there's anyone on the list to come up with comments.
No, no one signed up.
Okay, then the first point on our agenda is a presentation by the Greater Long Island Land Bank. I'm assuming they will be here. They said they would, but they're not here yet. So if it's agreeable, we'll move ahead to the middle school business program.
I did share you.
Yes, I'm wrong, yes.
I added some links to it. Um, I have, I have a, I went old school.
Thank you, thank you.
There is some new school though up there. Um, should I leave one for Cheryl?
Yes, please.
Um, and so I, I, Chris did, to summarize it, was to give great talk on the technology. And a lot, a lot of that was about for teacher purposes and you know, and he and I talked and I just thought, you know, with the one-to-one, you might want to know maybe what we could do with regard to the student, the student side of it. Okay, so, um, I did, I wrote, um, so I'm in the middle school this year for, you probably know, first and second period. And, um, it's wonderful. Um, yeah, it's great. Um, so, um, all right, so, oh, they didn't, all right, my links aren't here, but that's okay. So, um, I, cause I had some examples of some student work, um, and I, I had shared it and, um, but, um, so in this, I, I have all of the sixth grade. Okay, so first semester, I had A.C. day, B.D. day, sixth grade. And now I have a new crop this year, this semester. Um, and I have just a handful of eighth graders, um, maybe 12 or 13. Um, we start, we start, um, we start our day off, first thing when they come in, we're using Chromebooks. I, I go for the Chromebook card I have since day one because that's what they're going to be getting. Um, so I, I said, why mess around with anything else that's going to amuse to this? So, uh, we use the Chromebooks daily to get them ready for the rollout. Um, I start them, all of them, like all the sixth graders out, the eighth graders are past that. But the sixth graders, I start them out with keyboarding. A S T F J K L semicolon, okay. I got a free program online, it's typing.com and it's free and they move through the lessons. Um, learning and, and I have a, I took a picture today. Again, I add all this cool stuff, but at the last minute, but that, it'll get, but.
Do they have to type with all 10 keys or just use it?
They cannot. And they, and I have a picture, it's a hen and she is, and she's looked, she's like doing this, but no, no hen heading. And they tell on each other, so it's kind of cool. Um, but no, um, home row, free program, it keeps track of their progress. I can check their progress. I love this free stuff. I can, I can find it all over the place. So they all started out with that and it did have.
We love it too.
I know, I know you do. So, um, I, I did have a high school teacher tell me just like last week and said, "These kids cannot type. It takes them forever to type something." So, um, I'm working on that, I said. So, um, anyway, they've got the Chromebooks. They start learning basic keyboarding, a free online program. The levels, levels go from beginner, intermediate, and I do have some advanced students. Um, I have a chart and they move, I, I have them move their names along. Helps keep them motivated as they finish a lesson, they move along. Um, I do set a goal. I'd like them all at a certain level by a certain date. So I do put like a little star on one of them. Um, okay, so what I have here, so Google Instruction so far has included Drive. They learn how to manage, organize their files, um, in Drive. So that they can set up a file for, you know, in their future, they're set up a file for social studies and science and English. Organizing their drive, all right. Um, then we go right into docs. I've got a learn by doing book. Formatting and printing, although they don't print anything out, everything is shared with me as it would be with a teacher. Um, I comment with regard to, I don't give them paperwork, I, I don't use paper at all. Um, they share it with me, I make comments, you know, minus two for just, if there's a typo, minus five for this. And then at the top is their grade, so they can see that. Um, we do formatting lists, columns, tables. We import images, we create, they'll bring in a link so they can click on that, which brings them to another, to another site out in the web, um, retrieve and copy a doc. We, they do shapes and graphics and formatting, organizing tech. In all of these docs, they're typing. They're typing and they're reinforcing what they've been doing, okay? Um, the last part here is the collaboration piece of it. At the end of each unit, they use the collaboration feature in Google, in Google. Um, where they can, as, as you know, share a document where you can.
Yeah, I want to review your classroom.
Okay, sorry. They can, they can share a document and they can make it so the person can edit it, comment, or simply view it. And that's what I had done, I had shared with Patty and Debbie, that, that kind of thing. Um, the future of the sixth grade, last year's, last semester's sixth grade, we did coding, again, free program. Uh, where they did drag and drop coding, you know, making, it was Angry Birds. Making the Angry Birds, just first move forward three blocks and get to the pig. And then it just gets harder. And I'm confident a lot of them are still home doing it, because they loved it. Um, just to get back to the typing for a second too, I know they would go home and they could, they could race each other. There's a, so they could all be in their homes, they could race each other with their speed. So they were continuing to reinforce their typing. Um, coding, again, free online program. My eighth graders, that is a full year. I have them all here. Um, but again, it's a group of A.C.s, B.D.s, I don't see them every day. Um, we have finished sheets.
There's this question, so these 13 or 12 in the eighth grade, they just volunteered to, you know?
I don't know how they were chosen.
Um, I believe they had room in their schedule. And so rather than just have a study call, they would have the opportunity to take the class and be proficient with it, so they did.
Yeah.
It's one of the few, was it for that particular group of eighth graders, um, it was one of the few options for them for an elective type opportunity, but a very practical one.
Yeah, I think so, and, and we're all having a ball. Um, so they have finished sheets. I did a, I did a questionnaire, a form, I sent a, I sent a. What's the word I'm looking for?
A Google?
A Google form, a questionnaire out to the high school. To find out some of the things they know, they don't know, what they'd like to learn. A lot of them would like to learn sheets, uh, spreadsheets in general. We use Excel, we're using Google Sheets now. Um, I got a bunch of eighth graders that know this, that can do this, that can do formulas, that can calculate and do currency and bring, do graphs and pie charts and line charts and bar charts. And they can do this now. And I have, you know, colleagues with master's degrees that can't do that. So, um, they've done sheets. They've done slides. Actually, we're finishing that now where they're just, um, they're show, I showed them, we, we did where we brought a YouTube video in the slideshow. They can play the video right in the slideshow. It's not taking you out to YouTube to play it. So, uh, links, again, links and graphics, we'll be doing drawing. Um, that's kind of a little fun thing, but still very practical. Um, forms, Google Forms, we've sent a lot of those out before. Uh, they've done quizzes and tests, so they'll learn how to create those. Something new, Google is, they do, is Google Sites, which is creating a website. We'll be creating websites. Um, I'm do, I would like to get in doing some of the Gmail, managing and organizing, sending, collaborating. Um, I found in the high school kid, they don't, they don't check their emails. They don't. It's all, you know, it's all, it's it. And I keep, I keep telling my high schoolers, you got it. And they all are saying, "I'm not good with technology." You gotta be. I keep saying, "You have got to be. This is your future. This, this is going to become obsolete for you very soon. You've got to become good with technology." So, um, I, I, I'd like, you know, to get involved with organizing the Gmail. Uh, Google Contacts, calendars, Google Calendars. I use Google Calendars in my personal life. And I, and Google Calendars connects to Google Classroom, which a lot of, oh, I, I don't know, a lot of the teachers use. Some of the teachers use Google Classroom. But you can put these assignments right in your Google Classroom, in your Google Calendar. The kids can see the assignments that are due, when they're due. Da, 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 all right? So I'd like them to be, I'd like to teach them more of organizational things. I'm a big organizational freak, so I try to put that on them. Some of the other things we'll do is there's Google Maps. Um, searching the internet is another thing, techniques for, for searching is another thing I'm hopefully going to be able to get to with them. Um, and I, I just put at the bottom here, um, the continuation of project-based integration and collaboration. That's what it is. It's all hands-on doing. I'm not doing a lecturing. I'm up there doing it while they're doing it. So it's all hands-on. Um, and that's how you learn. Um, collaboration continues from there with many resources I already have available. I have a lot I need, I don't really need much more to do that. Um, but with that said, um, one of the other things that I just saw, something on Facebook about this today, was digital citizenship, leaving their digital footprint. And I just saw an article, um, and it was, it was, it was an article about blowing your future for your Facebook page or tweets. And it was, I, I don't know if you, I shared it, but there were some people who posted some, uh, one, one was from Penn State, Duke, and then SMU, Southern Methodist University. Were showing, and they were saying how so glad I saw this, I mean, before I met this person, you know, it just, they didn't get the job, they didn't get the, they didn't get on the team because of these, the digital. And I just think that's so important. And I, I, that's, that's a, that's a class all in itself, of course, all in itself, I should say. Another fun thing, um, I think would be for the seniors would be like digital portfolios. I could go on and on and on with the stuff we could do to help our, our kids. And I mean, these portfolios, the examples of their work in a, in a site and sending a link to somebody and also the person has to do is click on the link and go through this, the slideshow or the website. See all, and videos, so much these kids can do. Um, there's also some financial literacy stuff that we can do with the help of Google. Um.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. The, the list of future for eighth grade full year, is that still the same 13 students?
Yes.
Okay. Um, question on the Google Drive and the basic things. Did you find that your eighth graders already had some of that knowledge or?
No, a lot of their, when you open up, I don't know if you use docs or, okay, so you get, when you open up a doc, it's untitled doc. Their drives were full with untitled docs. So one of the first things is naming your document, whatever it is, lesson.
Then you've got to get to it, they really know.
Right, and then showing them how to create folder. So they're in Drive and then showing them how to create a folder and then we can color code them. So I don't know, first, in my mind, math has always been green. I, I don't know, but always, math is green, um, social studies brown. So even you can make a color for that folder, so you go, you go right to it. And then you can make folders within folders. Again, I'm a bit of an organizational freak where I have that. Um, you know, CTE department, uh, 2019, 20 budget. And within that, there's Talia, Dewayne, myself, you know, it's all, um, and then I can send that whole folder, the initial one, to Rebecca. I love it. I love this stuff. And I like to, I like to, you know, teach the kids this.
I have another question on the search in the internet. Are you teaching them scholarly sites and things like that?
Right, well, and, and I, I, I am actually, I'm going to work, I'm going to touch base when I get to that part. I'm going to touch base with Tammy Jones with that. She does that with the high schoolers already, so I would, I'm going to, she's already got some, you know, stuff that she uses. I, there is some, um, some, uh, books that I can purchase, uh, but I want to see what she's got first. So, yeah, it's all how, and so I just rather use what she, you know, ride, why you're in the wheel.
And the last question I have was the sixth graders. Are they, you said their first semester, is it this semester or is it going down a pipe?
I had, I had two groups of sixth graders in the last semester and I have two new ones this.
Two new ones this semester.
Yes, yeah. So I believe I see the whole sixth grade, which is good. And actually, another reason why I'm standing here right now is, well, Gillian Urbanoit, she was, when I had that first group of sixth graders, she came to me and Chris, so I'm not, I don't think I was, I think she, he mentioned it, I think he said, she came and said, "Oh my God, these sixth graders are so good. They can do this stuff. It's so helpful. It makes my life easy. They're helping me with Google Classroom. They're helping the other kids with docs and stuff." So, um, another reason why I'm here.
How big are the classes they have?
The sixth grade, um, 16th and 17th.
Is that too much, too little, perfect, good?
Man, yeah, completely, good, yeah, 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 no problem.
I have one question.
That's fine.
Um, so are you doing any assessment for either of these student groups?
Oh, at the.
So at the end, is gathering information of what they found useful or?
Well, again, this is my first year, but I can, I can say a verbal one, and of course I can't prove. But I, I did say the sixth graders last semester, near the end, I said, "Do you guys feel like you're typing faster than you were?" They're like, "Oh, yeah." You know, so they, they did do it, but on that typing program, we did a, we did a pre-test. We did a one-minute typing test. And so in a, in, um, I'm going to give, I, I'd like to wait till after we finish the first, the beginner unit. We'll do another one-minute typing test, which type, which does, words per minute in addition to accuracy. So, yes, and then at the, and with regard to the Google stuff, at the end of each unit, there is an assessment at the end of each one.
Thank you.
Um, are each of the kids set up with a Gmail account or do they have their own?
Yes, because that's how they, that's how this is all. The, the one nice thing about the Chromebooks is when they get to the, when they log in, they're logging into firstname dot lastname and then it already says over here at kantow.org. And then their password. They're logged on to their Gmail, they're logged on to their Google Drive.
And then that's something, will that take them through until they graduate that same one, do they have that?
The one, and another thing that I, we will, we need, I see this once in a while, is we need to remind them to log off. Because I actually, um, when I opened the computer that I usually use and a student had forgot to sign out. So with that, all havoc, you know, people get in there, start messing with your stuff. So that's one thing we have, another thing we have to reinforce with them is signing off, logging off. Uh, so that's, that, that's one of my other things. Um, but I do believe those sixth graders are going to be ready for those, that rollout. They're going to be, they're going to be good. Um, I, I do want to, I just want to mention something, which I thought was kind of cool and I was honored, but I, so I had this up, we all do our wish lists. W R knows this, but we had, we do our wish list and the, the middle school team came to me and says, "Can we put you on our wish list?" I was so honored, but I said, "How about on your wish list, you put a middle school business teacher?" So. Just throwing it out there that it might be a nice fundamental position to have in the middle school. Um, you know, we have two technology, two facts, so, um, I know it would, it would be benefit, and, and they could go, this, the typing should probably start in fifth grade-ish, um, really should. And then just be reinforced throughout the year, throughout the time. Um, you know, as we know, the, as soon as they start, the better they're going to get. And it's just going to make their lives easier going through middle school and high school, the teachers' lives, you know, and then into college or the workplace, whatever the case may be. They talk about their parents all the time, but, you know, that they learned. Um, but, and, you know, it, in, in the middle school, it really, if we gave, you know, a semester, a semester per grade would be great. And again, it could be so, it could, if we start them off keyboarding younger, the things that they could learn before they even get to high school are, I could, I could go on forever, obviously, but I won't, I know. But, um, then the things that, the, the advanced stuff that they do up here, we just keep going with it. Um, advanced courses are offered in the high school already, but ultimately could be offered at the middle school level as well. It's exciting and I'm happy that we are going to get the Chromebooks. I know, but.
Okay, and the other question for comments. Well, I have just a comment, I'd like to say thank you, it sounds really exciting.
Oh, it is exciting, it is.
It's wonderful to think we'll have digitally, um, you know, prepared students going forward.
Yeah.
One thing I did want to ask is that, since we didn't see the links today of examples of student work, can you forward it so that?
Yeah, I did, I, it's in that shared, um.
Okay, I'll have to look.
Okay.
In the tech committee, is it?
Uh, I can do it, I can do it right now.
All right, can you just say?
See?
Okay, it's because we'd love to see it.
Yeah, there's some great examples of some student work that, that would be, I was hoping you could see. And then just actually opening up, when they walk in, the classroom, being there. And then it says, "Today, February 14th." Da, 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 da. And then there's links for the typing program we use. There's what not, I show it, a nice YouTube video, what not to do to your Chromebook. It's, it's, it's funny and actually the gentleman in it looks like Kevin Studdel. Cause I pause it and I go, "Who does this look like? Is that, is that Mr. Studdel?" And he was walking by one day. I go, "Kevin, who does this look like?" "That looks like me." So, um, yeah, so I'll, I will share that with you guys.
A suggestion along with that might be how to care for them.
Yes, yes, and.
Because we might have a lot of students that haven't had one before, it'd be a nice impression.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, proper, yeah. Uh, I think we were taught, I'm a technology today, I think we were talking about even like the storage, stored in and that kind of thing. Sure, absolutely. And it's, it goes as simple as just don't put your, a pencil in there and try and close it. It's that kind of simple stuff, in addition to water and food.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Robert Albrecht is still not here. Could, would someone be willing to just take a quick walk out into the atrium and see him hanging around, looking for us?
How many were there?
Just one guy, I think, his name is Robert Albrecht. He's from the land.
Thanks, Ms. Evans.
Thank you.
Robert?
Robert? Okay, so, um, just to let you know that, um, our student representative is not here tonight, she took ill. And so we will not be having her student report tonight, but she will double, double up at the next meeting. Um, the other thing is that, um, Mr. Paolo is also recovered from surgery, he's right here. So, um, just to let you know that. Okay, so we'll move ahead to the board goals update. Unless, um, Robert is down.
Well, we can start in no ways, of course. I think we'll pause there. Okay, you start aside, just a very.
Okay, so I'm just going to give an update on our superintendent search. Um, we are down to three finalists. Um, and I will tell you who they are. Rich Damali is the high school principal in Gloverstown. Um, John Bishop is an elementary principal in Austin Kill Elementary School, which is part of the Avro, Avery Park.
Avery.
Avro Park School District. And Nick Fitzgerald is the high school principal at Cairo Durham School District. Um, no?
Are you there?
Okay, thank you very much. Um, we are going to have interviews with the three finalists on the last week of the month on the 26th, 27th, and 28th. And I'm just going to run down for you what we tentatively have planned, just so that everyone will be up to speed on that. Um, we are going to start, we're going to ask the candidates to show up around 11:00 and meet with the students over the lunch period, so we don't disrupt classes too much. And they'll be meeting in this room. Um, and then from 12:00 to 3:00, um, the candidate, and there'll just be one candidate each day, obviously. We'll get tours of the three buildings as well as the bus garage, which, you know, Gary will do. And the building tours can be worked out in each building. And they can also meet with building leaders. Um, at, after the 12:00 to 3:00 building visits, there will be a three, at 3:10 or thereabouts, a meeting with teachers and staff in the caf, the high school cafeteria, where the teachers and staff can talk with, get to know, and ask questions of the candidates. Um, from 4:00 to 5:00, we're going to give the candidates a tour of the area. Show them all the wonderful sights and, and things that candidate Gary has to offer. Uh, at 5:00 PM, we're going to be having dinner with the candidates. And then at 7:00, we're going to have the candidates meet with parents and community members, uh, also in the caf, in the high school cafeteria. And, um, and then at 8:00 PM, we will be having final interviews with the candidates. Um, we're going to be asking each of the constituent groups to list the strengths and weaknesses as they perceive them when they have their meetings. Um, I am planning to be there as well, just as an observer, to observe the interactions and any other school board members who are not retired who couldn't have the time off to do so. Um, and then what our plan is, is within seven to 10 days of the interviews to come up with the decision about a candidate. Once we have time to get all the feedback and discuss the results of the interviews and so forth. And so that is our timeline at this point and, um, we're excited, we think we have some good candidates and, um, hopefully you all will agree. So, um, that's, that's our plan for these superintendents as of now. It's still in formulation stages, so there might be a few pluses or minuses, but that's basically what we are.
So in the other goal areas, um, in the area of safety, under threat assessment, we have, um, an update that we thought we needed to have a district policy statement. We checked on that, we do not, we just need regulations and procedures. So this has been accomplished and we attached the regulations to a policy. That number is escaping me right now, but it's already an existing policy, it's in the 8000s. Um, on January 25th, at the end of Regents Week, the high school staff received additional training, just information training on restorative practices. Unfortunately, Mother Nature, who has been wreaking havoc with us of recent weeks, um, did so on Tuesday. The February faculty meeting was canceled due to weather, so some information was sent out to the high school staff um, in electronic format. Our, and those are the two things under safety. Under curriculum and instruction, the committee, the secondary. Under curriculum and instruction, the committee, the secondary schedule committee met. We reviewed all of the information regarding the current schedule structure that we received from four different surveys, and found those commonalities about the schedule structure. The next task is, that the committee will do is to benchmark those identified needs against other local and model schedule structures, as well as against best program practices. So that work continues to move along, and it's some highlight, it involved last time, some highlighters and a lot of paper. Under the engagement category, there is no update, we're just continuing on with our pilot volunteer program and moving that along.
Do you know how many we have?
We have one adult volunteer, two students, one student.
Two adults and students.
Two adults and students, sorry. So, in the area of budget, which we'll be talking a little bit about later, everybody was really great, all of our staff, and helpful in using our little checkbox form that we put on the requisition forms to align the expenditures with the vision, mission, and values statements to meet students' needs, so that has been incorporated. And, uh, just before this meeting, the finance committee conducted its first meeting on the nineteen-twenty budget. And in the area of technology, we have started the one-to-one professional development plan, and I say the beginning implementation of that. I know school staff has been queried as to their places of where they would start, as you remember, Mr. DiPaolo talked about people starting in different places. And, yes, we are still waiting for approval from S E D. and the Office of Budget and Management for the S S I D.
You sure it didn't get lost?
We are sure it did not get lost. It might've gotten lost, but no, it's still out there. The last update was on February sixth, we are still in expenditure review, which is in the Office of Budget and Management. So we're gonna work on the training part.
One other question I would have is, when we talked about the technology, we talked about making sure that we integrate curriculum. Has the curriculum, um, area been looking at that, or are we putting that under the technology piece?
The technology committee will look at it, but I wasn't at their last meeting. Chrissy, were you at the last meeting?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Did we, did they, did you guys start your conversation about curriculum integration yet?
No.
No, cause we were working on the P D. first.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's gonna come up next. But thank you for that, I wasn't able to do that last meeting, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? I'd just make one request, that if you could just get kind of the interim report on how the volunteer program is going so far, and at the, maybe the next meeting.
That would be great. Sarah, can you use my opinion, we have to break to do our F A Q. and our evaluation, so we can break that.
Great, perfect.
Thanks to Jennifer.
As far as the, um, just one last thing, on the restorative practices, could we get, um, an update from the staff on how that's either A. being integrated or B. being received by everybody, what they're finding is helpful and, or not helpful, or what they would like to see more of, et cetera?
Can you remind us what the timeline is? Cause I know this was kind of baseline knowledge.
It's, it still is at that, just keep adding to the, the knowledge base, so that then this, this late this winter or in spring, they can start to have those conversations. They were gonna start those conversations this past Tuesday before the weather threw a little hurricaness at us.
Anything else, Sarah? Thank you. Next point on the agenda is the education committee.
Can we, I, well, here we are, and here we are. We waved to Patty out, yeah. So who wants to? So the committee met on February, so I'll just start, and then anybody else can, can join in. So, we are continuing as a committee to work on the consideration of moving to a model that includes teacher assistance. We also are working on some secondary math concerns and opportunities, and just as an update to that, I met with the department chair, Chris has done some work in the middle school. We'll be bringing all of that together, including bringing the math department together to do some work. The committee reviewed and discussed two possible calendars. A third option was offered, and tonight we have option three A. that we're gonna talk about just for discussion purposes. Option three A. has been shared with the business agent at the marketing unit. Just as one slight little tweak that we'll talk about in the nineteen-twenty calendar for discussion.
I think that's.
One thing I would like to reiterate, which I, I know I said last time when we gave the report back is, I've been really pleased with the collaborative nature of the meetings, and I think we're all working together to try and solve problems and answer questions, and I think it's been a very positive, positive experience, so I'm very pleased about that. Okay, so that's it on that, and then we'll move ahead to discussion of the budget. So we'll start with, so that's first on the list, operations and maintenance. Okay, well, um, we all have this budget. My best just if you have questions, but.
Can you tell us what's driving the twelve thousand, the equipment is worth for a twelve thousand increase?
Well, what I do is basically, I teachers, each principal gives me requests from their teachers, and I try to fit as much of it in, in the budget as I can. The only item that isn't actually for the teacher, for the student, is the lawnmower. So it's, it's kinda not a, you know, equipment isn't really a fixed number each year, it's whatever I can get to fit in the budget. Up until, you know, we added some things. A part of the budget that I normally do, Leah does the upper part, and I do the lower part. I had like a seven thousand dollar increase, then Leah added some stuff to the upper part, a couple items, and then brought it up to the eleven thousand. So, so it's just a matter of trying to fit in, you know, the teacher's requests. I don't, I'm not able to get it all in there, but I take it, a section for each level, from elementary, middle, and the high school, and then I try to dig it up.
So it sounds like the real driver is the lawnmower?
Well, the lawnmower is definitely, I guess you could say that, about that part.
In terms of the namepiece, right. So, can you just tell us, is that an additional, a replacement, just let us know?
It's an additional, and the, the, last year, we demoed a, this lawnmower. It's a, it was a prototype at the time. And it's designed for the steep hills that we have. And it can handle a slope up to twenty-five degrees. Actually, our, our steeper slope, which is behind the mowers, is actually twenty-five degrees. The comparison, Moynor Street, the steepest part of Moynor Street is fifty percent. So as a comparison, how steep the slopes are here on some of the lawn. And our mowers, we've been doing it, but it's, it's, you know, we can't always get it mowed, because depending on the conditions, you know, safety reasons. So this, this mower was specially designed for doing the steep hills that we have here, and it would only be used for it. So it would actually be an additional piece of work.
And you expect the life to be longer because it's gonna have limited use?
Yeah, you know, our, our equipment lasts a long time. Our, our oldest piece of equip, mowing equipment is actually, I purchased in nineteen ninety-four, and we're still running it. So it's just a matter of maintaining the equipment. So yes, it'll have a long life. The only purpose is safety on the hill. It's not really designed, I mean, it's designed to mow anything with it, but, but I'm just adding it because of safety, not, not because of me. It's just that we've had a couple of close calls with the equipment we had on some of those steep hills. So that's, it's perfect.
One question that I had asked Gary previously before the meeting, but I'd like to ask you to just talk about it a little bit, is the, of the seeding and, oh, and dressing of the football field. One of the question I had raised about that was, isn't that part of our capital improvement budget, whether doing the track at all? And so if you could just talk about that.
Okay, well, uh, first, we're doing the track, and we're, and we're, and because of working on the track, we're gonna sod in around the football field, like next to the track, because they'll tear it up a little bit. But nothing was really addressed as far as the field itself, cause that wasn't part of the scope of the project, it was a track project. And I guess, you know, we have very little downtime with our fields, so I thought, well, this is an opportunity to, you know, kinda give it a chance to reseed and, and take growth, because, you know, because it's hard to do that with our fields, cause they use so much. I talked with Eric Tanowski from S E I., and our goal is to see if it will fit into the capital budget. But if it doesn't, I wanted to have that money there, just so we could get that done while nobody will be on the field. And that should last for a number of years. Last year was a real wet season, so we've got to throw up a little extra, a little extra last year, and it's really in need of some, some maintenance. So, so that's why it's in there. It's not a yearly thing, it's just something I thought we could get done.
Any other questions on that break?
I, I just had a question, probably because I'm new to this whole process, was just, um, the telephone. There's three different breakdowns, A T. and T., telecon, and time Warner. Somebody just explain the breakdown of those and what they're used for. Just out of curi, I, like I said, curiosity, I'm new to this.
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, um, the A T. and T. is the plan for a lot of the, the kinds of cell phones, the tri-cell phones. The telecon, are the phones that the, some of the.
Make me stand.
Yeah, that's some of the maintenance, that's some of the phones that they use. And that's where the telecon is, and the time Warner is the kind of service. And our goal is to get the rest of the district.
So for the four or five administrators, it's eight thousand dollars? I'm just, that's why, yeah, that makes sense to me. Okay. The answer's a, I think, that's fine.
Following up on yours in terms of repair the field damage, words. Is, is there, is there any work that the contractor that's doing the field work has to do to repair the damage that might happen as?
Well, they, they won't be working on the actual football, they'll be working around.
I understand that.
Yeah, so.
So my question is.
He said they, he said they replaced the rest of the track, but.
But not the football field if they damaged that?
Well, they, well, if they were to, if they were to damage it, then yes, but I would assume that they won't be doing it.
Okay.
Okay. Or anything they damage, they have to repair, but they'd be working around the track, or around the football field. In fact, they even asked us to line the outside of the football field so they stay out of it.
Okay. So your, your feeling really is it's just an opportune time to reseed it?
Right, because it, it's a downtime for the field. It's something that hasn't, we, we seeded it before, just seed it, but it doesn't really take that long, because it's, it's just used all the time. This is a, like a three-month span of time that it just won't be used. And that way, the seeds will take hold, and it'll hold up for a lot longer, for, you know, a few more years than, than what we've normally done. And it's never been tougher, I know, this time. Again, if there's room in the budget after we get the, the, uh, the bids back, you know, we'll be able to move it into the project, but we won't know that until the bids are back.
I have one other question, the line that just says building repair.
When, when are we expecting those bids back? Do you have any idea?
Uh, next Thursday.
Okay, so we'll, we'll pretty, we'll pretty.
Right, well, yeah, by the time we go through them, I mean, that's when we actually do the bid open. It'll take probably a couple of weeks to go through them in detail, and see where everything fits. We do have a lot of volatility and stuff.
No, that's fine. Under the building category, the line that just says building repair forty thousand, what is that?
That's a, basically just, in case we have issues with the building, if, you know.
Is, is that number, how does that number relate to last year's number that you had there?
Well, we're not at the end of the year yet, but, um, it varies, cause what we, basically, if we don't use it in that, probably we move it to another one later on in the year. But things like when we did the work on, when we had to flood the faucet, that's building repair, that money came out. I don't know what the number is off the top of my head, where we stand right now, but it's things like of that nature.
No, no, what I, I didn't mean expenses up to this point, I meant compared to our current year budget, how much do you have in that? And I understand the concept of just that building repair bucket for whatever might happen.
Okay, and how much did we have for this year?
Right now, it doesn't show that line item of just the building repair bucket, forty thousand, for last year. So I'm asking, in relationship to last year, is that forty thousand the same, higher, or lower?
No, I think it's the same as last year. I don't know if that's.
I, um, looking at last year's numbers, we spent sixty-eight thousand in building repair, and so far for this year, we spent fifty thousand.
But what was, do you have that number that it budgeted last year?
Well, the, the beginning budget was, eighteen, nineteen, Scott?
Yeah.
The beginning budget number is sixty-three thousand, which is listed on the, on the sheet.
Yeah, no, I, I see that. What I was getting at was the line items, because there's one big giant bucket of forty thousand, and I understand it's perfect.
We have to go through and see what the other categories were that were not itemized in there, and see what exactly.
I was just wondering if that's where the fifty-five hundred was. Thank you.
That's one of those level of detail, the deep dives are gonna be directed.
Okay, anything else on operations and maintenance? Okay, moving right along to transportation. Questions, comments, or do you wanna have, do you have anything to say first, or should we just throw questions and comments?
I think it'd be good, I'm not sure what you folks have in front of you, so.
We have the original. The one that's up on the screen.
Okay, so we can, as you look out through there, if you have any questions, we can, uh. We worked on that since.
Okay, so just to let everyone know, there was a transportation committee meeting this afternoon that went over this budget, and so I think probably the most productive would be to just go through it and talk about what have any changes remained and why, and that would, I guess, best, best thing to say.
So if you drop down there to transportation supplies. Sixty thousand dollars, so I based that on, uh, what we had spent, and then looking forward to sort of projections. And what I found, when I looked closer at it today, was that there was a couple, several items that were misallocated back in July, when we were making the transfer, Harold to myself, he was helping me with requesting money and doing V O.'s. So there's like, I figured we could drop it back to forty-five, so taking out fifteen thousand and reallocating that. So ten thousand really should have been put down at the bottom of the list. Uh, it was expense for cameras, radios, for the new buses. So when we purchase new or release new, we update because the technology just.
You're, you're in the right spot. It should have been added to that contract maintenance list for two thousand.
Under bi-, bus diagnostic software, so it should have been a ten thousand dollar.
Additional.
Additional. That was spent out of transportation supplies, okay? So, um, that number was for three buses and one van. We anticipate, uh, turning in five buses and replacing van this year. So that number translates to seventeen thousand rather than ten thousand as a projection for those. And then, uh, the other adjustment was, uh, five thousand that we spent to repair doors and, uh, lifts. And that should have been, that should have been allocated differently. Garage equipment right there. And it was well-covered within that six thousand dollar budget, so we didn't move that ticket. Okay? So that, what I'm saying is we revamped that sixty thousand down to forty-five now. The other big item is the gasoline oil. And, um, we had it at one thirty-five last year. And when I projected that out in January, I was thinking we were, uh, we're gonna be way over budget. So I increased it by that much. However, as I re-looked at that, uh, today, we've spent around sixty-six, and I think the projection is sixty thousand more. So that's a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So with the present one thirty-five in the budget, I think that's sufficient. We added twenty-five thousand up there for new van. We never have had that in the budget. What we've done is whatever's left over, we purchased based on what we need. And, but it's come to the point in time where one van per year is a necessity because of the miles and the usage that they're given. So they might as well deal with that, rather than wondering if we're gonna go and purchase one or not. So that's there as an addition. And, uh, what was the other things, Scott? It was, uh, subs.
Yes, subs and extra trips. Subs and extra trips. The extra trips, we think the budget number is right, but we, we moved some money out of it. We'll have to move it back in. The, um, subs, we are running way under what we had in as a budget. This was subs for bus drivers and things like that. And we looked at last year's actual expenditures, and that was forty-one plus thousand. We only had a budget of twenty-five thousand, so that was oversight on our part. So we're, um, planning a budget of forty-five thousand for that for next year. So the net-net, if you go down to the bottom of this page, net-net is that seven sixteen number changes to.
Seven oh three.
Seven oh three, six fifty. And we moved some of that money into, um, the salary line for subs. So it's not necessarily a true savings, but we tried to categorize it more accurately. I think that's a pretty good sum.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
I have a question. Transportation aid, this doesn't include any transportation aid?
No, this is only the expenditure budget, the revenue budget is, is where the transportation aid will come into play.
Gotcha.
For revenue, we don't break.
We always want to maximize our expenditures for transportation aid.
Okay, so thank you very much, both of you, for the budgets and for coming to explain. You are free to leave if you so desire. You're free to stay as well. Oh, okay. What Debbie was just asking is, um, we'd like to give a finance committee update. We just had a meeting at six, and I can do that quickly. Um, we're just in preliminary stages. Um, right now, it's, um, it's looking like a very difficult year budgetarily. We got a, a small increase from the governor's budget, but that was before he discovered a two billion dollar shortfall in the state revenues. So, um, you know, we'll have to see what, what happens. Usually, we get a, a little significant boost from the state legislature after the governor's budget, but this year, it's very much a question whether that will happen. And so we're gonna have to really, um, we're gonna have to really have a hard job and sharpen our pencils and do the best we can because it's, it looks like it's gonna be a difficult year financially, not only us, but the school districts around the state. To be continued, and hopefully, uh, hopefully you'll find two billion dollars, but that will be back. Okay, any other questions, comments?
So the only other thing I would add to that is, based on our conversation with the finance committee, we are gonna have to be a bit more granular than we have been in the past to really try to get the kinds of questions we were asking, right? Because we're gonna have to get to that kind of detail and make some more decisions.
Okay, um, next on our calendar is, next on our calendar is the calendar.
All right, this is an item for discussion. As I said, the education committee looked at A and B. We discussed C. And this draft D is, has just one small, can you just pop it down a little bit? One small, uh, change to it, and I'll explain what the change is. This year, we are looking at, as closely as possible, aligning our calendars across the BOSEs region, which is also looking to line across the capital, uh, cap region BOSEs for a lot of different reasons. Primarily to look, to see how we can take advantage of some of the shared, uh, resources or the resources that cap region BOSEs has that we can share with. So this calendar provides, um, a variety of different, uh, vacation days that are all aligned with cap region BOSEs. And the only change, and this has been shared with the bargaining unit, is a circle on October fifteenth, which is an additional professional development day for staff. It, it reduces our, our snow days just by one, and I'll explain why. On Monday, I was at a meeting with other BOSEs, superintendents, and some curriculum people. We were talking about the rollout for the next generation English and mathematics standards. And we are looking in our region to copy the model that has been used this year piloted in Skowheri and some other counties. Sharon Springs is a part of that pilot, yeah, right there. And one of the things that requires in the structure of how they're rolling this out to their teachers is that you have days when everybody in the region is available to have a large professional development, um, opportunity. So for us to be able to, uh, do that kind of work within our region, which by the way, we don't have the capacity to do this work on our own. We really do need to take advantage of the resources of cap region BOSEs, our own HFM BOSEs, and our other school districts. We needed to add in one additional superintendent's conference day because the October and the November one, and I'll talk about that in a minute, are the two key days for all staff to be together. And I mean all staff across our BOSEs region. Now, if you go to March, you'll see that we have a March twentieth day. That was in versions A, B, and C. Um, and that is a day like similar we have this year, that if we have difficulties with weather, that day could flip to an instructional day. We have that in this year's calendar. So with that one, it's not as critical to the model and the system for curriculum development for the next gen standards. So that would be a day that could revert back to an instructional day.
So that would potentially be fourth, slow data?
The fifth one.
Fifth?
Or fourth one, sorry, fourth one, fourth one. So, and if you go, and if you pop back up to the top, to August, I just wanna highlight two other things in this calendar for discussion. One is, in our contract negotiations last year, we did agree that, with mutual agreement by the superintendent, the bargaining unit, that the, the pre, the before-school conference day could be held in August. This was the, um, education committee's suggestion that we do a draft, in, in draft, that includes an August twenty-eighth day for preschool, not preschool as in little children, before-school, um, activities, before the school year starts activities. So we agreed on that, that has remained the same. And I think the other important piece is the November fifth day. We have decided as a region that because schools are still polling places, including East Hill, we would have that day as a professional development day, so there would be no children in the buildings during elections. And that are all the things there are about the calendar for discussion.
This, this has been shared with, um, the bargaining.
Bargaining, yeah, it's been shared when I talked to Chad about it. So I don't know how far on their circle it's gotten, but yes, that's by contract. And yeah, so the original was shared with them. Version D, which just has that October date, was also shared with them. So we'll share it with Chad, excuse me. My, my direct connection is with the business agent. So.
Cliff, as the, as the education committee. We did talk about the twenty-eighth collective.
Yes, yes.
So the only change since that.
Is just that fifteenth day. Yeah, that's it, that's the only change. Everything else is exactly the same. And that's just to take care of the, take advantage of the regional system for professional development for the rollout of the next gen standards. Which the state, I, I would just like to say, the state has given us the opportunity to do this one better than Common Core. We would be remiss if we didn't take advantage of the opportunity to do it in, within this system that is already being piloted and tested. So that makes a whole lot of sense.
Do you have questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We'll bring it back for, we'll have another education committee meeting before the next board meeting. So we'll be, or March is our next one, so we'll be able to then adopt, actually to adopt a calendar, the March meeting.
One thing that I don't see on here is, uh.
It's under, we added it.
That's under, yeah. That's this year's, now we're done next year's. That's okay.
Okay, so up to approvals, um, would you like to do it, a consent agenda for a please? Is there any reason we can't do it all, Harry?
That's up to whatever you want to do.
Okay, is there any, what objection to anything, if we all part of the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, we'll have a motion?
Motion, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
All? Okay, so we'll start with the minutes. Okay, January tenth minutes, any comments, questions, comments? No? Okay, the January twenty-fourth was just our executive superintendent's search business. So I continue to discuss that. So move along to budget transfers, any questions there, comments? I have just one, uh, I guess, comment or question. I see there's a bunch of money coming out of the BOSE special education budget in two different places, going elsewhere. And so does that mean that we just have extra money in that, and so now we could use it to cover up our expenses? Okay, so that's a good idea. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly. Anything else? Okay, and the next thing will be bills, any questions there, comments?
I assume that was a brand new ice machine.
Yeah.
What's written, high school ice machine?
That's, we didn't buy a base, I mean, that's for the doors on the high school.
Something that has a door on the ice machine.
Well, we did, the doors were, were bad on the, on the high school. So we replaced, actually, we replaced, uh, four locker room doors and one of the doors on the high. You call it the high school, it's where the ice machine was. In the back hall.
Ice machine, it's a closet where the ice machine is.
Really expensive ice machine.
What's that?
Otherwise, so it is.
We replaced the door on the table where the ice machine is.
Anything more? Will you move on?
Thank you for the notes, that's helpful.
A treasures report, any comments or questions there? I have one comment. I'm thrilled to see that the New York class has finally been implemented. And I think it's really impressive, if you look at it, um, in the New York class budget, there's, um, on a million dollars, which was put in there, we made eighteen hundred dollars interest in one month. And that comes to two percent. Versus, just I looked at, let's say, the cap fund, which had two hundred ninety-two thousand and eighty-seven dollars, which comes out to two tenths of one percent. So it's a significant increase in, in, uh, money for the district. So thank you very much, and I'm very pleased.
Finally.
That's a hundred thousand dollars of a budget problem.
There we go, amen.
You know, so I mean, it's really.
Took us a while to get there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really, I'm excited to follow you.
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, uh, course syllabi. And any questions or comments there?
I'm, I'm passionate. Um, the, is this a collaborative effort amongst the, like, for intermediate algebra, let's say, all of the math teachers together? Or was this, like, one of the math teachers is like, hey, I have this idea and put it together? Same thing with the creative writing, is that like a whole ELA group? Or is that like one who like had the brain and said, hey, let's offer this?
It's a combination of both for the three that we are presenting tonight. In the program of studies development, teachers have the opportunity to offer new classes or talk about new classes. The math department, actually, that was a collaborative effort. The fitness, the creative writing, one, I think were more individual efforts. So what they, what people do is they submit the course syllabi for approval so that it gets, um, they can get into the program of studies or be added to the program of studies, so that students would have those opportunities when they are meaning to do their program planning.
So, so then as a follow-up to that, um, does the person who created that particular class, like creative writing or whatever, would they have the opportunity to teach that class? Or could it be some, or would it be someone else?
Well, generally, the people who create classes are the people who teach them.
So I kind of have a follow-up in the same, I mean, so the ones that were kind of an individual that created them, what process have they gone through to get?
So they first have to indicate an interest at the program. When the departments do the program planning, they talk about what courses they're going to offer. So the departments get together to do that. There'll be a discussion with the building principal. Generally, when we get to these kinds for the, to the classes for the syllabi. for the syllabus, then I take a look at them to make sure that they meet all of the requirements or that it, that we're clear on what the purpose of the class is. So it's really just like a triple idea, triple check. And then I just do it because I'm interested in what people are also going to be offering and how it fits so that we bring it to you guys for...
So I kind of have a thought because we kind of bolstered the department chair role.
Yep.
And I'm wondering if that ought to be a part of that process from a holistic curriculum perspective of the department?
Well, for the two, I can't speak to the creative writing one, but I can speak to the other two because the department chairs were involved in both of those other two. So I'm going to, I just don't know, I just don't know.
No, that's fine. I'm just...
On the backend or on the frontend, when they start, when departments need to talk about the program of studies, that's when they review the courses that are being offered. They review what other additions they might like to make. So I can only speak to two of the three of these, two of the three directly involved department chairs. It doesn't mean creative writing didn't, I just own them.
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
My suggestion is that we make that a part of the formal process now since we've kind of really tried to bolster up that role.
And I think the other thing we would want to do that I learned this, this year is to really come up with a template for a course syllabus that would be easier for everybody to use and to look at. So we're going to work on that, too.
Any others?
I've got a question. Debbie, you had mentioned something about program planning. So students have already met or started meeting for scheduling, I'm assuming.
They're, they're just starting now, yeah, right now, yeah.
So if these were approved, these would be included?
Yeah. They're preliminarily included now, pending approval.
Alright, so students would be aware if they didn't kind of sign up for these, they could have a chance to go back.
Right, exactly, yeah. But they're already, we, we say some things pending approval.
Sure.
So we make sure students have maximum opportunities.
And where it says pending enrollment, what is your minimal amount for, for that?
Yeah. For, so for brand new, yep. For brand new classes, we'll sit in the five to seven range. We go pretty low so that you at least give the chance, the class a chance to grab a hold of and, and take root so that once you get things going. Some classes will come right out of the gate with strong enrollment and stay that way. Some classes will have strong enrollment, but over time that diminishes, then that, you know, then that, then enrollment becomes an issue there. But we'll go low to get things started because you want to give things a chance to get started at least.
And... Sorry, just a question.
When it comes back to you, let it wait.
I have a couple of questions, so maybe I will...
Go, go.
This intermediate algebra course, who are the schools that would be targeting for that? What, what purpose would it serve?
So the purpose that that class will serve will be to provide students with some additional skills to be successful at higher level math. So one of the things that the math department will be looking at will be students and their performance in both algebra and geometry. So one of the goals of the math department is more math. I mean, very clear. They want students to take more math and they would like students to take higher level math. So one of the things we know we have yet to accomplish is a really tight articulated math curriculum. So we want to make sure that as we're pushing students towards higher level of mathematics, we're giving them the support, the skills they need to do that. So that would be the purpose of this course.
I had a similar question about the creative writing course because it talks about in the description that it helps prepare students for an upper level creative writing course. Do we have such a course?
Not yet, but we might.
Okay, so this is, this will be the only creative writing?
For right now. For now.
And in the future, there might be another.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just remembered what it was. It was, are there prerequisites to the classes? Will the, you know, are the teachers?
Yes.
Like if you, you know, if you go into band, you have to be able to play an instrument, you know, when you're in high school, so, you know, that kind of stuff.
Right, so for, so for example, the math class, it's really based on performance in algebra and geometry. So those are two of the classes for that. The fitness class, interestingly, is a senior-only class. So that's how that is constructed. So that's done by age because of the kind of, the personal training class, yeah.
Is that taking the place of the phys ed class?
No, it would be an addition to, it's no idea.
And is that a whole year?
Anything else? All right, we'll be right along to Nellis Fund Expenditure. That's for touchpads which are going rotten. And so any comments or questions about that?
There's a million dollar amount.
I don't know that we have a quote yet. But can you talk a little bit just about the Nellis Fund?
We have the account. I've spent there forever. There's ninety-two thousand dollars in it. And we've never spent it. And it's supposed to be used for the Nellis pool area. So I think it's about five...
I think, I might even check in if it's, if I received something of an amount. For some reason, a five-thousand-dollar amount is sticking in my head, lucky. So we've never, since we've never used the money, we thought it would be wise to ask the board. Here we go.
Is it unrestricted funds, Leah?
It has to be used for the Nellis pool.
That's the only restriction?
Yes. So here's what Kevin had said to me. He said two touchpads, about fifteen hundred dollars for both, and a replacement LCD for our timing console. He did not provide a cost with that at this time.
So we'd be looking at approximately fifteen hundred plus or five hundred, two hundred? So you want it to drop to seventeen hundred? Does that feel...
Or we can have a, get a cost estimate for everything. So we've never used this money. So what process would you like to use?
You want to just ask the schooling consortium to submit a proposal?
Yeah, Kevin would do that.
Yeah.
With, with the actual cost.
Yeah.
So the process is, really, the question is, what process would you like to use? Because moving into the future, the pool will need things, this fund should be expended.
I think if they could put in a request and...
Okay, sorry.
Because it's, we call this a grant or what was that? Not a grant, but a...
It's restricted fund.
Do, do they have to, or Kevin or whoever's put in the budget, they have to put in like free quotes or a couple of different quotes? Or is it just kind of the one he wants?
No, I don't think there's anything in the, how the fund was set up. It was just leftover money from when the pool and the Nellis structure was built. We looked at that. It's pretty, there's no...
Do we need to, should we ask them to put in a different, couple of different quotes so we know? I mean, I have no idea what a pad is or what a...
I know what a pad is, but I have no idea how much it costs.
Yeah.
It's about fifteen hundred dollars for both, so...
Yeah.
And it's not restricted to just the facility, right? Because, I mean, those pads come in and out every time.
I don't know.
They just, they, they hook on the edge of the pool and that's when, so when it's finished, they touch them and that's another time.
So they're, they're really, they don't really become part of the pool, that's why I was asking.
Right, right, no, there's, it's just for...
It was, it, it didn't...
It doesn't spend aside.
Okay, just want to make sure we're not...
It has to be for the pool and that facility.
Yes, for the pool and the Nellis facility.
All right, so seeing, seeing as we're not going to really consider this tonight, can we pull that out of the consent agenda? Yeah, we'll put it in. So the property tax exemption for senior citizens. Any questions, comments there?
Do we have any idea how much this is costing?
This is, this is something that we've already been doing for years, but the accessories office in Montgomery County, real property office, did not have any...
Record.
Resolution from us.
So it's no change?
That's...
Thank you.
And if you look at it, it's really very low for those who are trying to exempt social security and any other kinds of income.
Where for them to keep receiving this exemption, we have to pass this resolution.
Any other questions? Okay, the Greater Mohawk Valley Land Bank, I guess we'll have to pull that out and take it as well to the president. Contract for services with AgPTEC Mentoring Program. Questions or comments there? I have a question. Is that the money that they're talking about at the end, the twenty-nine thousand, is that money that we would be putting up?
That's grant.
Oh, that's grants, it's not our...
No, no, it says it's straight through the grant that we are the fiscal LEA for. So it's all grant funds, no district funds at all.
Any other questions or comments?
So the grant is through us, but the chamber's involved?
We are just the fiscal LEA for the grant, which means we just manage the financial piece, yes. So the chamber's involved as one of the programmatic partners. And it has been since the beginning, and this is their third year, third year of the grant.
Okay, I decided for that one. All right, then we'll be on to the EPC, fourth-party financial review. Could you use some...
Gary, ready this one? Gary Sting, just for this.
Okay, well, just in case you had a question.
Oh, okay, you want me to go ahead?
No, it's okay.
Okay, you're...
So, so basically, what we're going is we're going, like we did with the capital project, we're going for a third-party review to kind of expedite it to move along because SED is so backed up. So this is, this is, with EPC, there's actually two third-party reviews, so one we call it fourth-party review. And basically, the first review is, is a, it's a third-party that will review the calculations that Johnson Patrol made for the energy saving. Oh, if you remember all those energy savings, they, they're going to just double-check the numbers to make sure they're accurate. And that, that is about four, about, according to the company, we do that within twelve weeks. And then, and then once we do that, then we go to the third-party review for safety and codes. And, and that just, again, expedites the EPC so we can start it sooner because SED is approximately a year behind with EPC projects. So, so this will definitely speed things up. We, we received four proposals when we sent out a RFP. We received three proposals. Whitman, let me see, I'm very...
They're up there on the list.
We, we chose Whitman because, well, they're the only ones that did a complete...
On the screen.
Right there it is. So, so they were the only ones. Brown gave us a quote for a flex stack. If you remember, a few years back, we did a flex stack off-energy audit. But that's, we don't really want to do another one of those. Eisenbeck didn't really do a complete proposal that he... So Whitman, which is actually the cheapest one, they did a complete, they answered all the questions in our proposal, and so we decided to choose them. The district doesn't actually, we choose the company to do this third-party review. We pay them, and then Johnson Patrol pays us back. And the same thing happens with the other third-party review. So there is no cost to us to expedite the center.
Have you just said the other third-party review? What do you mean by that?
This, this third-party review, which is what we're calling a fourth-party review, is for the calculation. So they're going to double-check all the calculations that Johnson Patrol's made to prove that it's an eighteen-year payback so it would fit into the new program. The, the other, after this one is complete, then we, we have to go through another RFP. We have to check another company to do the, the safety and code review.
Okay. And do we have a quote for that one yet?
We, we won't until after this one's approved. Then, then we walk for an RFP.
And we'll get reimbursed for both?
Yeah.
Yes.
And this is only for the, the energy replacement component? This has nothing to do with the capital?
Right, this is only for... Anything else? Okay, so I, I'll go to a vote on the consent agenda with Nellis Fund Expenditure and Greater Mohawk Valley Land Bank. We move. All in favor?
Aye.
All suspensions? Okay, the Nellis Fund Expenditure, I would entertain a motion to table?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll table the AgPTEC, motion to table?
Uh, wait, no, it was not AgPTEC.
Greater Mohawk Valley, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would, I'll take, I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so all business. Who will report part follow-up? Take your way, Stacy.
I have need information. So, Malaga Hunch, looking at how our children who, I'm going to call it, at State End calls continuously enrolled for accountability purposes. So just using that phrase to say, any child...
I'm trying, what phrase?
Figures continuously enrolled as part of your family. But that's just your group, your testing years to testing years. This is a child who came to us on the first day of kindergarten and has been with us through the testing date. So that was the continuously enrolled in kindergarten. And then a transfer student is any student that, it's two pages, I have them, two, I have, yeah. Transfer student is any student who came in or out or joined us at some point. And this is, Jen and I will look at the data of all children. So this is all, when we look at our East Hill accountability, East Hill actually means is the elementary that came here. So it's our elementary students that are also in Bosso's programs or other programs for playing holes, stuff like that. So what you can see, the, the big picture right there is that first table that, for our ELA scores, grades three, four, and five, I put them together as one cohort. We did have over one hundred continuously enrolled students that had been with us since kindergarten, and thirty-four percent of them either received a level three or a level four. And we had, it was thirty-six, thirty-six transfer students for ELA, and they had a seventeen percent level three, level four. For math, the numbers were basically similar. We, we lose a couple because they opt out.
So this says seventeen, eighteen?
This is last year's test.
So it's last year's testing? And when did we consolidate the reading program?
Last year was only the second.
Is it the first year or the second?
This is the second, this is the second.
So, so the reading program was in process, and the testing would have been toward the end of the year, is that right, of our first year?
Mm-hmm. And Matthew, so we see about a 16, 17% spread between those that have been with us and those that come or come and go, come and go is common too. So, I'm glad we went down this rabbit hole. Gives us a strategy for us to share with the teachers and the staff at East Hill, then to think about, you know, what testing are we doing, how quickly are we getting children to AIS if they need AIS, and where are we filling those gaps? You can see the more detail, more granular in the separate grade level charts, but the big picture is the first year.
In the more granular charts, Stacy? Where you have the boxes separated, like, I'm just looking at level one box to be able to talk about grade three. Level one, 11%, is that out of the total population? In other words, combined, transfer and continuous? Okay.
Just out of curiosity, we might not have it here, but what are opt-out numbers where at each of those grade levels?
Great question, because you can see there in the first column, you know, at fifth grade, we're 44, 48, but we stood more consistent in third grade there, 52. So our class is from 60, 65, so I don't think that's...
Okay, yeah, okay.
So, 60, a quarter, quarter plus.
One of the things I'm noticing, as we did when we looked at the figures a while ago, that there's a real discrepancy between grades in terms of students that are struggling. And have, have there been any kind of talk about, or, you know, looking into that question? You know, like you look in, for instance, the fifth grade, you know, there's more than half students of all types are in level one, and that's concerning at least.
It's exciting at the financial solution, because the teacher, grade level groups ask for incentive gaps so they can actually fill out the each student. And then they can also look to start CBI analysis, so grade level teams are working with that. Programmatic decisions when you see shifts. The third grade is encouraging, because we did such a push in reading three, four years ago, we were wondering if we'd be able to...
Also, what would also be interesting, just for us in terms of, but how many students with disabilities are taking the tests and where they would follow up to that too? Does that make a difference?
No, yeah. And it's funny, because when you look at, just hand to the data, for the grade, for example, their students were in the, they had two grade range, so there's no mistakes. As well as students succeeding or students aren't succeeding, and they are, regardless of just... And I'm sure it's a question of the tip of your tongue, that one student got a four in math and one student, yeah, like, great two students, not really two, not the same one.
So, I don't remember, so I'm asking for reminders. What was our baseline starting point? And what's our goal over what period of time?
Generally, for our state assessments, is your question?
No, I meant as a district. So, are, the percentage of students that are below proficiency is the majority across all grades, if I didn't have that right? So, what's, I guess, better question is, what's the trend over time? And when did we, did we put a baseline score that we're trying to improve from? I want to kind of understand what's our objective here, where are we trying to get to, and what number are we working from?
Each overall, it'd be still building the ELA and math both increased at a seven or eight percent, I don't know which was which, but both were increased from last year.
So are we only looking at year over year, or do we have some...
Like going back further?
No, no, no. Even if we just look forward, do we only have year over year goals, or do we have some place where we want to aspire to, and by when?
At this point, we have year over years.
I think that might be a good thing to maybe have faculty and staff try to think about that, right? Where do we, what do we think's achievable, particularly since we've got a new program in place, you're starting to get feedback on that, right?
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Okay, next point is community event, March 14th.
Which is a nice tie-in to the conversation. So, as part of the goals this year, you had decided that you would like to hold another community event, this one focused around the 3-8 assessments. So, tonight, we just wanted to provide to you some ideas that we had about that for your feedback, because the event is coming upon us quickly, so we want to make sure we're going in the right direction. So the purpose of the event was, is to bring together the parents of K8 students. So unlike our last community, your last community event, this one is a more targeted population of, of parents, parents of K8 students to learn about the 3-8 ELA and math standards and assessments. So what we thought, since it's a more targeted group of parents, would be to take advantage of the date, 3, 1, 4, 1, 9, otherwise known as pies, and have pizza pie and pie for the event, and then offer that as a way to, just seemed to work. The math department is doing a big thing on Pie Day, so we'll get back to you with all the fun stuff they have going on. But we would invite families to come, enjoy some pizza and a beverage, learn a little bit about both ELA, math, and the assessments, and do that in a station format, and then have a wrap-up altogether with pie, dessert time. So just to think about that. So that's just some ideas. It keeps it a little bit simpler. It's for a much more targeted audience, and we just want to offer that to you and get your feedback so we can move forward as the time stands.
What's your plan for what the evening is going to look like, besides the pie?
So you'd have pie, then you would have stations that people could go to to learn about ELA and math and the importance of the state assessment. So you would do some ELA things with some of the ELA questions, correct, from the assessment? But same thing for math, but then have a station that just really talks about why the assessments are important, or that part could be done at dessert.
So are you going to have released questions for parents to look at?
Yeah. And maybe some examples of what students are doing to help learn the skills for those questions? It has been my experience that it's fun to kind of give people the questions to do so they get a sense of it. They're not taking the test, but it's the release questions.
No, so they can see it.
Yeah, so they can see it, yes.
And, and as, you know, we discussed, it is, one of the things is to try and encourage parents to reduce the opt-out rate for the testing. And one big component of that would be whether or not Cuomo signs the decoupling of the standardized testing from the annual professional performance review. At this point, we have another month, so hopefully we'll do it, and, you know, we'll see what happens. Because that would also, I think, be a very helpful thing to talk about with parents, and certainly remove a lot of the oddest of the testing in people's minds.
Yes. That and the finance, I think people need to understand how much that affects.
Yeah, and it was certainly...
Right, the...
Because a lot of people don't...
And we're in the news now, indicating that we are potentially a target school.
For next year's newspaper, and, you know, that's...
I know what it means.
Right, right. But at the same time, like, okay, why are we, and what's the reason?
The participation rate.
That, I mean, we don't want that marred on our district of community.
So that, that certainly, I think, would be one of the things we'd be talking about. You know, the significant potential damage that we can take to history if we don't begin to turn this around.
But also the pros of what that data does provide us, and how we're using some of that data to drive, you know, how, where we're going with some of our scores. We're looking at these scores here, but now we're taking it even a step further. We're drilling down inside data to help move this forward and so how it's valuable. If we don't have that data, then we can't use it, so.
One other thing I, in addition to us, you know, approving this, you know, this plan...
Or giving some other suggestions, opinions, like you go.
Yep, and, and as you said, you know, adding to it or modifying it. Another thing I think that I'd like to discuss right after we get through the meat of this is to, we want to consider having a school board meeting on another date, because we will be missing the second meeting this month, and this will be the first meeting in March. And so I would like to suggest possibly the 13th as a school board meeting date, for your consideration. Just, I'm just throwing it out there now to kind of keep it in the back of the night, because I don't think it would be a good thing to miss two school board meetings in a row. Just my thought. So, I know we have a lot of meetings around superintendent search and so forth, but, you know, it's, it's a lot of cattle. So anyhow, any questions or comments or suggestions about the Pie Day?
Well, we don't have a NITD title for it yet, but we're working on it.
How do you use a break?
Well, the math department did kind of have, they kind of have a lock on Pie Day right now. That does really tell people about the assessment, so we have to figure out something.
I think the, what we put together for the opting out is going to be important. And I don't know if we want to lead with that or handle that. One or the other, I would think. Just to kind of set the tone and flavor of what this is about, and what the ramifications of the testing is. And that would be one way of doing it, and then the, the stations of sharing the tests themselves, right? That might be a way to comfort them of, oh, this, you know, okay, now I see what's in it, you know?
Right.
So, I could go either way on that, but I think that's probably a critical portion of this.
I have one other thing. I think it would really be important also to talk about how standardized tests relate to individual students, and how it is not a punitive thing that, you know, is damaging to students in any way. And I think that, that should all be, I think, addressed in terms of if and how, you know, it affects individual students. I think that's one, in addition to the teacher tie into the standardized testing in terms of teacher evaluation, I think there's also some concern that it somehow can adversely affect my, my child. And so I think that that should be addressed in some way that would help people not to be as concerned about that.
I think along those lines of what you just said is trying to make parents feel more comfortable with the fact that if a child gets a one or a two on the state assessment, that doesn't necessarily mean they go into AIS, or if that's a bad thing or a good thing, because they need to understand that there's teacher input and there's parent input on that as well. And the other thing is when you get into middle school, seventh and eighth grade, thinking about those kids, especially the ones who are in the higher level classes and who may end up taking a high-stakes test of an algebra regents or science regents when they're in eighth grade, okay? Having this practice, so to speak, of taking these tests, you know, and that's, I think more parents will understand that, because they have to take the regents to graduate, and that's something more tangible that they can wrap their brains in.
Perfect. Just so you know, we have a board policy of, I don't know, three or four years ago now, around academic intervention services, if you remember this, that has a multi-data point approach to it, so it's not just one thing, it is and, 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 and. So there is, I just don't remember the number right now, but there's a word, we did that a few years ago.
Parents might not be aware of that.
Right, they, right, right. That's a good place to say, hey, by the way, here's how we also do it.
Anyone else? Okay, and again, I'm just going to throw this in. Any thoughts about the year's meeting?
What was that date you were talking about?
Thirteenth.
When you say the thirteenth.
So the day before.
There's a concert Tuesday the 12th.
Oh, there's a concert on the campus.
Well, Tuesday the 12th is the March.
It's the music and the schools, it's going to be here with the art room.
And the bus stop.
And the bus stop.
Transportation referendum is that I...
It is on the 12th.
So, could we, thirteenth, everyone?
Wednesday the 13th, at seven.
I have a, I have a minute.
Do you want to, do you want to change the time?
Ah, well, I'll tell you for the house. Yeah, I should be able to pick it, I just might be late.
All right, so I, I think, just to be on there, so 13th, I think, okay. And do we have to vote on the Pie Day, or just...
No, we just, so we'll put together a publicity plan, and I'll, and then we'll cover some NITD title for it. So, I think that feedback about leading with the assessment piece and how it's helpful would be a good way to start. Now, you said it, Scott, but I do think at some point maybe we want to wrap up though with some of the bigger picture items, because I think we, we don't want to make it, I mean, we do want to explain what the impact is, but we don't need to do that during pizza time, maybe we do that during dessert time. So maybe we look at it with some things in the middle.
Yep.
And we were talking about a six o'clock start, I'm going back to my document, just a little bit earlier, because we are, we are targeting elementary age students, K8s.
And we're going to have a bounce house.
Oh, yeah. We got the bounce house coming. We put money to support this event in our Title I grant, so we, this is, because Title I also includes how to encourage participation in the assessments and parents' outreach, so we have the funds for this as part of our approved Title I grant. So that's where we got funds for Saturday, Sunday, and Pi, as well as that's us.
Six o'clock.
Yep, yeah, probably six to us, seven, fifteen, seven thirty. Little children will need to be in bed.
Okay, I will, I'll take the motion, please move into executive session.
I just wanted, I just wanted to say, I just, I just shared that with, my thing with all of you.
Okay.
Check your emails.
Thank you.
All right, click on, and all the links are there, so you can check them, the students' work.
Okay. Thank you for that, sure.
Okay, so, go ahead, a motion, and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on five minutes, right?
Yeah.